So, welcome colleagues. I was hoping to... That Jay was going to join us this evening, but he doesn't appear to be. He's out. A smaller audience this evening, but still a much bigger audience than we were having 12 months ago. So, welcome to all those people who are observing us this evening. Nothing much to report on the civic duties front as there's no events happening and people are still not getting together. However, I think it's worth thanking councillor Palmer for organising the planting, the purchase of the plants with contributions from some town councillors. And then he single-handedly planted the plants and watered them for a couple of weeks. And he's now managed to get the shops, some of the shops in Castle Street, to water them a couple of times a week. And it's really nice to see, I've been wondering up there today, that it would appear, and I assume it's the shops, I don't know, that there is extra planting taking place into the planters. So, yeah, it's very good. So, thank you to all of those people in town who have contributed towards that. I got, I'm assuming we all did, got the email off councillor Love Lock. And it's good to see that the borough bus hasn't totally and utterly disappeared. And that the initiative that was started by Clangothlin Town Council last year has still got some traction, yeah. It might be something that we're invited to join as a group, yeah, when it's a little further down the line. So, that's very encouraging. And I'm guessing, lastly, the consultation, and Mike Jones is going to explain it to us, for the consultation of the 2020 project is next week. And it would be great if we could encourage, yeah, the people that we represent to go down to town and share their views with the people who will be outside the town hall all week, I believe. So, if nobody's, well, if we've got any questions, that's about it from this evening. And without more ado, can I invite Mike Jones from Dembeshia, who's come this evening to talk to us about the 2020 project? Mike, obviously you.
Thank you Chair. Thank you for welcoming me here this evening to give a presentation on the Clangothlin 2020 Castle Street project. I've got a presentation I'd like to go through first, which just explains a little bit about the process that we're going through at the moment with the consultation and then the subsequent decision-making. And then there'll obviously also within that presentation is information about the proposed scheme itself. So, perhaps if we go through the presentation and then obviously I can take questions. So, if that sounds okay. Gareth, if you'd be happy to launch a presentation, please. Okay, great, thank you. I'm going to just go on to the second slide, please. Okay, hopefully you can all see the presentation, okay. So, I'm sure you're all pretty familiar with the timeline so far with this project. So, the Clangothlin 2020 group, first meeting, I believe, was January 2018. Then feasibility study was undertaken, starting in May 2018, followed by a couple of consultation events that took place within the town, asking people about, the first one particularly, asking about existing problems and some suggested solutions, and then again some more detail about proposed solutions in the second consultation. Feasibility study was published in January 2019. Since then, as Dembeshia County Council officers, we've continued to work really closely with the 2020 group as we have from the start to develop the detail around the design of the scheme. And this financial year, we have funding in place, which I'll go through in a minute with a view to delivering the scheme this year, subject to the consultation and subject to approval of a scheme being given. If you just go on to the next slide, please Gareth. Okay, so we're aware although there's consultation been undertaken previously, that was three years ago, best part of. Not everybody might have seen that at that time, or they might have forgotten what was involved in it. So, we felt that the time was right to carry out a comprehensive consultation exercise, which has been launched today. So, some of the detail of what we're doing over this next three weeks. So, a letter drop has commenced yesterday to approximately 2,000 homes and businesses within Clangothlin, telling them about the details of the schemes and all the main elements of the scheme and the reasons for it. Also detailing how people can take part, how they can view plans and so on. So, today, a press release was released by Dembeshia with that similar information, with a link to our consultation portal, which is the online element of the consultation. So, that is essentially hosted within the Dembeshia website and it gives people the opportunity to again read the reasons, the principles behind the scheme. And they can view plans, view the computer-generated images showing visualisations of what the scheme would be predicted to look like, should it be approved and should it be implemented. Obviously, this presentation this evening that I'm here for, we've also made paper copies of the questionnaire available. So, within the letter and within the press release are information about how people can request those paper copies. We've also got some physical plans on display in a window between Fuzes Bar and the Royal Hotel as well, that people can view 24/7. Then, as was just referred to earlier, next week we've got the public exhibition on Castle Street itself. So, just outside the town hall, we'll have, and near the library, there'll be a couple of gazebos, put up displays, we'll be up showing the plans, showing the visualisations. Officers will be in attendance where they can discuss the plans and answer any questions of people who attend. Again, that's something that, you know, will be publicised and continue to publicise and it's referred to in all the documentation and publicity that's gone out so far. Also, as officers, we'll be calling to all Castle Street businesses to give them the opportunity to look at the information to either visit or look at, we'll take paper copies of the plans around. We can hand out paper copies of the questionnaire, of course, of everything that are available bilaterally, of course, as well. Also got meeting planned revision support, it's just the final details are being arranged as we speak. And again, with the visiting of businesses, the intention is we'll call in, but then we can call back at times to suit the individual businesses rather than just doorstepping them and appreciating it might not be the most convenient time we can come back as needed. So then, the three-week consultation ends then on three weeks today, which is the 6th of July. Then the intention is that a presentation on the project and the summary of all the consultation responses is then presented to Dembeshia's phone cabinet on the 27th of July, where a decision will be taken as to whether or not the scheme should proceed. If the decision was taken to proceed with the scheme, then the construction would commence in September of this year with a view to completion of construction in March 2022. Okay, just the next slide, please Gareth. Okay, so existing issues that were raised during the initial consultation exercise in 2018 that are referred to, no great surprises to any of you as the local community, concerns about traffic and parking congestion. Just go on to the next slide as well, please Gareth. Concerns about narrowness of footways, difficulty crossing Castle Street, concerns about speeds on Castle Street, concerns about, as I say, lack of crossing points, concerns about clutter, concerns about the state of the public realm as well. Okay, next slide, please. So, just to give some bullet points really of the main features and you'll see some of the visualisations as we go through this. Firstly, we'll be removing the on-street parking from Castle Streets. There will however be two loading bays provided along Castle Street, which you'll see on the images to follow. Also, there's to be two new disabled bays, disabled parking bays provided, one on Bridge Street, one on Oak Street at the Castle Street end of those two respective streets. We're also looking to raise junctions at the, both the Mill Street, Abbey Street, Castle Street junction and the junction with Bridge Streets and also D Lane to basically reduce speeds, it'll be like a ramped effect and then the carriageway surface would be raised, so it creates like a kind of traffic calming effect. And then there'd be numerous dropped curb crossings with the tactile paving provided along Castle Streets. Next slide, please. So, this is one of the visualisations, some of you may have seen these already that have been launched today with the consultation. So, this, as I say, is using computer-generated imagery to show how the project would look if it was implemented. So, the main features are a narrowing of the carriageway from the existing 7.3 metres down to 6 metres. You can see just in a kind of, where you see the silver car and there's a white car in front of that heading away from where the picture's been taken. That's one of the loading bays, you can just see there. Also showing the yellow lines that are shown there at a 50mm, what we call conservation lines, that are basically half the width of standard yellow lines and it's in a paler yellow colour as well. You can also see the Yorkstone paving, obviously, in the footways and there's a slate band that you can see as well that's behind the curb. And the curb is what we call a conservation curb, so a higher quality curb. Next slide, please. And again, an image here by the town hall. So, again, that's another loading bay there that's shown. We're not putting the worded loading markings because we're trying to minimise visual intrusion of any markings and signs. It's the same thing we do with the narrower, paler, yellow lines, the same principle as that. So, you can see the existing acacia tree still shown there. You'll be aware, there's obviously been some correspondence and coverage in the press about that recently. The current position is we're still awaiting an arborist's report because they want to carry out an aerial inspection, so therefore higher up the tree. Our intention, if we can keep the tree, we want to keep the tree. It's obviously really, you know, as you can see in that image there, it really improves the streetscape. However, we're aware of issues with the roots, they can be tackled by the tree hugger type bench that you can hopefully make out surrounding the tree at the base. But it's only right and diligent in looking at a project like this that we assess the condition of the tree, because the last thing anyone would want is to find out in, you know, a couple of years' time that there's an issue with the tree and it's got to be removed and we've just spent all this money repaving, should the scheme go ahead. So, at the moment, we're waiting on the report, but certainly if we can keep the tree, then, you know, we will do so, unless there's a very clear and compelling reason not to. And then, as you'll have, I'm sure you'll have seen, there's also an additional tree that's being proposed there and you can just make out close to the D Lane junction. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, Market Street, so we're proposing 14 free short stay spaces, maximum stay of an hour. Some of those will be disabled parking bays with a maximum stay of two hours. They, I should say, are going to go ahead. We're hoping for implementation very shortly on those. And they will go ahead whether or not the Castle Street project goes ahead. That's something that we're committed to doing. We're also looking to make the section of Market Street between Castle Street and East Street one-way in a westerly direction as it currently is with the temporary scheme. And we're also looking to accommodate a permanent loading bay on Market Street again as there is presently, and that will obviously both serve Market Street and nearby businesses on Castle Street. Next slide, please. And that's just an extract of the plan. Appreciate the clarity of some of the labels isn't great, but on the actual plans that'll be on display or that you can view online, they can be zoomed in and, you know, the clarity's clear enough on those. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, Castle Street, Abbey Road junction. So, we're looking to remove the on-street parking at the northerly curb line at that junction, which allowed a northerly pavement to be widened. The junction's being raised, as I mentioned earlier, to reduce speeds. We're also looking to accommodate a dropped curb pedestrian crossing on the, basically the westerly side, the horseshoe pass side of the junction, which yet you can see there, that's the one with the buff, the yellowy-coloured tactile paving and the kind of top-right quadrant of that image. Because although, of course, we've got the puffing, the signal-controlled crossing on the other side, on the ruabin side of the junction, the problem, we know that the biggest crossing demand is close to the station entrance there. We've done the vehicle tracking and so on to make sure that can fit in. But, you know, a recent survey we did, it captured something like 450 crossing movements a day at that crossing point as opposed to nearer 100 where the signal-controlled crossing is. Okay, next slide, please. And again, this is the third and final of the computer-generated images showing the bridge. As you can see, you can pick out a couple of the crossing points on there as well. Okay, so next slide, thank you. So, other measures that are included, so as it stands, we're proposing to make the change to Church Street, which was made as part of the temporary scheme, permanent, which is obviously a reversal of the one-way on Church Street to try and reduce the rat run-in toward the A5 that was occurring. And also Short Street, there's a temporary closure on that at the moment, as I'm sure you're aware, and there's some planters there, so this would be to make it permanent through something called a prohibition of traffic order. Next slide, please. Okay, so funding, so the latest estimated cost for the project for this financial year is 1.7 million. So, that table there shows the various contributions, there's a mix, as you can see, from Dembeshia County Council funding and various Welsh Government grants as well. Given that total of 1.7. We've built in, you know, a reasonable amount of contingency into some of the construction costs because obviously, you know, once, you know, should the scheme go ahead, once you get into construction works, you do obviously get that variation sometimes. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, and then what's important to point out as well is that while this is obviously a very, very substantial scheme at 1.7 million and it's something that we've wanted to progress also because of the condition of the Castle Street carriageway at the moment as well, to make sure that we do this as our starting projects, so to speak. It is really phase one, so then there are subsequent phases to it, which would all happen, you know, next financial year and beyond, should the main scheme go ahead, which is firstly to try and make greater use of the outlying car parks, look at greater flexibility for residential parking as well, and that's something potentially can actually be done at the tail end of this financial year. And that would be basically allowing resident permit holders to park within any resident zone that already exists. And of course, looking at options for overflow parking during school holidays and weekends in the summer at the school. Okay, and next slide, this is the final slide. Okay, and again, as part of subsequent phases, Castle Street, as you can see, have shown with the red line there. Of course, it does also play a key role for pedestrian and cycling journeys, particularly pedestrian journeys to school. Highlighted the residential areas there in orange, where one of them looks only yellow, of course, as the Vicarage Fields development, which of course is greatly developed since that ordinance survey map base map was taken. The school and leisure centre shown in a kind of lilac colour, so as you can see, and you know, as obviously you know, as local community, it's a real key route. So, improving those pedestrian routes along there is important too. But also what we need to do in the subsequent years is to provide those links, to provide more continuous routes, you know, between those destinations. Okay, and that's it, thank you. So, happy to take questions.
Chair, if I could, please.
Go ahead councillor Davies.
All right, okay, yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, Mike, nice to talk to you again. I welcome the scheme. It was in a form of life. The original funding was put in place in 2017 by myself and the former councillor, Rhys Hughes. People have got the wrong impression that I'm against the scheme. I aren't, I'm not, and I never have been. But just the devil is, of course, is always in the detail. There are a few points I'd like to have a chat with you and I don't wish to waste the time of councillors here now, but if I could call you sometime during the week, it would be helpful, talk about the schemes that were planned back in 2017, that would complement the scheme. And I think you referred to it in, when you say outliers. And also, this council asked through me, through a motion I put forward, about an emergency weight restriction on the bridge. I think that that would tie in very, very nicely with the scheme. It would enhance it. And I know we've had concerns raised, but I think concerns that can be dealt with easily. So, congratulations. I just wish that you'd have involved us more from the very beginning, which would perhaps have alleviated some of the nastier stuff that's been flying around. But congratulations on it. I look forward to working with you and let's make this right for all the people of all of the town. Thank you very much.
Stuart, just kind of briefly, as we're a corporate body, it would be really useful, I'm sure we can make the time for you to highlight, yeah, some of the things that you want to talk to Dembeshia about. Unless of course you're talking to them as Stuart Davies and not councillor Stuart Davies.
I don't think there's any need for that tone of language, Chair. However, I did put forward right at the very beginning when I got elected, some of the points that I wished to talk to Mike about and they were ignored. So, let's move forward, let's get this scheme going. Good scheme, but as I say, the devil's in the detail and let's make it work for everybody.
Okay, that was nothing, no offence meant at all Stuart, it was just the, yeah, no offence meant or anything meant in the comments are made, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anybody else, any questions? No? I think we've kind of, we're kind of well aware of what the scheme and we've been kept fairly well informed by our county councillors and there've been a couple of presentations to council. So, it's nice to see the visual images though, yeah. So, thanks very much. Stay calm Stuart.
One of the points, Chair, I like the images, it looks good. Unfortunately, there were no eight-wheeled wagons there or buses forcing themselves onto the pavement, but that's just a little passing comment from me.
So, thank you very much, Mike, that's brilliant. Will you be around next week?
I certainly will, yeah, but probably most days. We've just put in the rotor together as we speak and we've got a number of officers helping because we're trying to have, you know, ideally at least kind of four officers at any one time because I'm conscious that you can get in conversation with someone and it's important that the other people who arrive aren't having to wait too long to speak to somebody, so we're trying to have as many staff as we can.
Yeah, just as I, just to save me concepting you, at what sort of time are you thinking of starting up in the morning? Not in terms of consultation, but setting up?
Yeah.
As me and a colleague are setting up the gazebo for you.
Yeah, you know, anything from say nine o'clock? I'm assuming now would be enough to get the gazebo up and there's obviously display boards and so on to put up them.
Yeah, that's great, that's great, okay then. So, I look forward to seeing you Monday perhaps, yeah.
Yeah, great, well, thank you.
Chair, can I just ask, Mike, Mike, are you bringing the display boards?
We, I'll speak to you about those. We've got a couple of sources where we can get them from, so perhaps we'll have a chat tomorrow about that.
Okay, cheers.
Oh, cheers, sorry, sorry.
Sorry Gareth, yeah.
Sorry, just for members of the asset management committee here, they have expressed an interest obviously in managing the assets. Perhaps just have a look, closer look at the detail around the town hall and I know that Mr Jones has agreed that we can arrange a subsequent meeting on-site, perhaps after they've got through the melee of the week in town. And so that's on the cards to speak with the designer as well, so we can accommodate any concerns local to the town hall.
Excellent, yeah. Yeah, thanks very much, Mike, thanks for sort of the clarification of things which have perhaps been misunderstood, thank you.
No problem at all, okay, yeah, happy for me to leave now?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, all right, thanks all, thanks for having me.
Thank you, Mike.
And again, sorry to jact, Mr Brian Jones, the audience has put his hand up, unfortunately it's not a public meeting, so we can't allow the public to speak on the matter. But if people have, want to make a comment, if they could put their hand up from the audience because we can sort of miss statements from the public. So, we're going to, we can accept a statement, but it's not a debate on anything.
Okay, thank you.
Could you let Mr Brian Jones in?
Uh, Mike Jones is gone, so shall we do that now then Gareth, yeah, before we move to the 2020?
I am still here, absolutely, sorry.
All right, sorry, go on then.
I'll let Mr Brian Jones in if he has something to say.
Yeah, can you hear me, can you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All I want to say was, I found all this a little bit odd. I thought I was invited to the meeting, so I've listened to everything on the presentation and I wouldn't put my hand up just to let you know I was hanging around somewhere. So, it was nice to see all your faces. It was very, very positive to hear the positive comments from councillor Stuart Davies and that with that I will depart for a walk round the beach. Be real, good evening gentlemen.
For those of you that don't know, Brian Jones, who has just spoken to us, was the architects of the scheme that we've just been discussing, that's right, is it not?
Well, no, I'm the lead member, yeah, on the Dembeshia cabinet and obviously I've got a, I've had a lot of input into making sure this consultation is going to be sort of transparent, et cetera, et cetera. And I was part of the decision that it goes to the cabinet to decide, does this go forward or not? So, it's a properly run consultation and a proper high-level decision is made at the end of it. So, hopefully everybody in Clangothlin will have the opportunity to input into this consultation. I think the idea of the leaflets, although it might appear old-school, sticking 10,000 leaflets through doors, not everybody's on internet, not everybody's into the technology gizmos. So, everyone who's interested should have an opportunity to input into the scheme and I'm looking forward to the results of the consultation. So, thank you gentlemen, have a good meeting.
Thank you very much, thanks Mike, thanks Brian.
Thanks all, good evening, bye now.
Right, there you are. Are there any statements from the public, from anybody else whilst we're here? If you could put your hand up if you want to say something. No, nobody? Right, have we, is our county, have we, have we got our county councillor the reports to us? With us at the meeting, we haven't, have we?
Well, councillor Miles, yeah, obviously.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I wasn't dismissing councillor Miles as a county councillor, it's usually his colleague that reports to us. Melvin, do you have anything to say over the board?
Well, really, I mean, the main thing is just what we've heard. There's, you know, not really very much else to add to that, very, you know, it's, well, it says it all, doesn't it? We all, what we need now are for the people of Clangothlin to come forward and give us their idea, you know, give us their opinions on the scheme. And from there, you know, the scheme will either go ahead or not. I would say that the 1.7 million is there for this scheme, it's not there for anything else. If this scheme doesn't go through in the kind of way that it's, the majority of the way that it's in, that money will disappear anyway, so it's, you know, so it's, it's an opportunity for Clangothlin to have a brand-new town centre fit for the next 80 years. The sandstone is beautiful, it's going to be absolutely stunning and that will be available to be seen and in the consultation next week. That's really all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you Melvin, has anybody got any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, apologies for absence.
As Chair, the only one we have is councillor Palmer, that's obviously not been able to connect. We don't, we don't take it as a failure to connect, but he's, actually not, not, how do I say?
Not available, are we?
We acknowledge he's not available, he's on leave, but had to connect, okay? He's happy to propose on that basis.
Anybody like to propose, thank you. Bob, seconded by councillor Greenley, all those in favour?
Aye.
Thank you. Right, declarations of interest? Okay, thank you. Minutes of meetings, minutes of the annual meeting.
Mr Chairman, can I recall that there's a fault in the minutes on item C5 stroke 22, scheme of delegation, we've got 11 members and... um, C5 stroke 22, scheme of delegation. Uh, we've got 11 members and according to this, there was a vote for two against and two extensions. We've made 12, so that needs to be amended.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Anything else? Anybody like to propose those minutes as true record? Councillor Haddie, councillor Mile, second in it. All those in favour?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, minutes of the town council held on the 8th of May. Anybody got anything, any questions, any issues with those? Anybody like to propose them as a true record?
Move.
For Haddie, councillor Lube, second in none, thank you. Uh, to receive the minutes of the asset management committee held on the 9th of March and the human resources committee, well, we do them one at a time, I guess. Uh, 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 asset management committee at 9th of March, anybody want to propose those?
Actually, there's, we, um, when we had our next meeting after that, we pointed out that there was an error in the minutes. Just in one item where it was stipulated that there was no additional cost to one of the items.
Yeah.
That hasn't been amended in those minutes as yet.
Yeah. Yeah, is that, is that an amendment that we can do, Gareth?
Well, the amendment will appear in the minutes and that, just, you know, they were corrected in the minutes of the last meeting and those minutes will come to the next meeting.
Okay, so the next, that minute will be correction, thank you. Uh, anybody like to propose those minutes? Uh, Melvin, uh, Paul Caddie, uh, second in them, all those in favour?
Aye.
Thank you. The human resources committee, 11th of March, 2021. Uh, anybody like to propose those as a record? Yeah, thank you, uh, councillor Caddie. Somebody like to second those please? Thank you, councillor Lube, all those in favour?
Aye.
Thank you. Prove the minutes of the Chitterslow Committee held on the 11th of March. Anybody like to, yeah, propose those? Councillor Greenley, seconded by councillor Carroll. Yeah, all those in favour? Thank you. Financial reports. Can't hear you Gareth, you're on mute.
Sorry, I'm just trying to get rid of the previous presentation because on the payments which, um, I will endeavour, I'm sorry, press the wrong blue button. I will try and share to see there have been some amendments. Can you all see that?
Yeah.
Yeah. I've just highlighted them, additions have come in since the agenda went out. Paul Ashby, uh, digital locks, we put another digital lock on the stage door to allow access, um, without having to use the key safe because the key safe is fiddly and obviously we, we want to minimise the contact and people touching things, so it's just a power on hold automatically. And it's an even more modern version, so we've given specific codes to specific groups and there are one day codes that will ultimately raise after a day, so that's been installed. Board of Gynecorial PPE, that's just restocking, um, some hand sanitizers and, and other things with that. Ben Blackwood Craft, that seat repairs of the, um, um, balcony, uh, and missed, and then the mysterious donate, uh, benefactors going in tomorrow to have a look, so hopefully all that money will come in soon to reimburse us for these jobs. Lino Skippie, that's for the planting. When we, when we do the planting, they have to take out earth obviously from the planters and replace. Two, uh, two paint, so obviously, um, bills, quite, um, self explanatory, come from Morgans. Parish Connect, our premium, which I mentioned before, has now come through. Um, so that's what's been paid, so it's it's due this month to make sure you've insurance. Uh, one, um, obviously cleaning materials from Rockinham Williams and then home bargains. Uh, Charlie had to get some stuff for the office, it was easier to get it from there than all of it, so those are the additions, chairman.
Thank you. Anybody got any comments? But I just, like, the, um, the planters, last year we had, um, uh, a couple of substantial conversations about the planters needing to be refurbished in terms of the wicks and stuff for them to be, uh, worthwhile. Is that, is that being done this time?
Been done, that's why we had to get the skip because all the, all the soil's been taken out and redone.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Hopefully it should be even better.
Okay, uh, uh, financial statements?
Uh, that's in your pack. I can call it up if people want to quiz any specific things, but it's still early days. Um, you know, it's, uh,
Anybody got any questions with regards to, I guess you've had an opportunity to look at it? Okay, thank you. Uh, annual return?
Uh, the annual return, we've had the comments, as you can see, from the internal auditor. And it seems to be getting less every year, which is quite nice. Uh, one was an adjustment, um, we'd incorrectly or hired incorrectly, but one of the costs in the wrong column in the Excel spreadsheet. Won't happen anymore because the new software won't allow me. Um, so we've had to readjust the, the, the figures in the tables, which you've had a new copy sent back. Uh, so that just means moving things to staff costs and then other payments reduced accordingly. And then the other one was, um, which I hadn't realised, that the central heating system is, is a asset and now has to be prepared. So I've also on the register written off the old system because obviously that's been taken out. So that's, that show that that's gone. Uh, and, um, there's this sort of, uh, strange scenario for the asset register, we have to show the value of pound, but that's the value of the transfer. But then insurance assets, we have to show the, which will be 3.8 million now, so our assets will go through the roof. Uh, so they, those have been done and, um, and the comment is from the, you know, that I've now had the return back and they have commented on the return that the work has been done during the course of the internal audit. So I'll, I'll need to get the, the mayor to try and perhaps, I don't know, send his, stand electronic signature because everything's online, um, unless I can find another way with the auditors. Uh, just authorizes to send it now for into, um, in external audit, which is, as you know, that from now on, it's been done by the auditor general for Wales and not external companies.
Gareth.
Can I just ask a question, Chair?
Yeah.
I'll make a point. Um, Gareth, uh, Town Clark says that, um, we have to put 3.8 million as our asset. That's just for some insured to replace, surely the value, I'm, I'm a bit confused here, the value of the building is probably around about three or 400, 500,000 quid, but to replace it is what the insurance premium is. So which one do we go for? Do we go for the 3.8 million or what the value of the building is? I don't know.
As an asset value, it's valued at 3.8 million in short, and then reinstatement costs would be, that's what we get to record, mate.
Yeah, but it, yeah.
But for, for the internal, I don't understand it pretty, I just do as I'm told on certain things like that. Uh, because we bought it for a pound, that's its true asset value.
Yeah.
See what I mean? Uh, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's different if you speak to different auditors.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Carroll, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I'm, hang on, my own. Yeah, I was just thinking that it should be the value of the building rather than the reinstatement valuation on the balance sheet because the reinstatement is a cost, whereas the actual value is what you might sell it for, which is what should be on the balance sheet. But like Gareth said, you, if you'd only sell it for a pound, then it's got no value. It, it's kind of, I presume it's a not-for-profit, so it doesn't affect anything, but writing up the value might have tax implications if it wasn't a not-for-profit, but it seems odd to have the reinstatement valuation on the balance sheet anyway.
Yeah, so the 3.8 million is the rebuilding cost of it rather than what you might sell it for, yeah?
Yeah, I wouldn't expect to see that on the balance sheet. I'd expect the market value to be on the balance sheet.
Could you check that please, Gareth?
Yeah, we don't have balance sheets, so we're, you know, we're not, we're not, we don't do that accounting. Uh, if it's wrong, external auditor will let us know.
Okay, that's great.
The insured value is not only the rebuilding cost, but it's the removal of the old building or much, uh, in the event of a fire, brick and marble. So, um, the, the original cost would, to us was a pound, but we can't sell it and it's not an unencumbered, um, sale at that pound. Because should we decide to sell the town hall, there's a clawback from Dambisher uh, in the first 25 years or something like that. I can't quite remember the detail. So, um, it, it, it seems unreasonable that 3.8 million quid is the value of it because that's unrealistic.
Well, okay, Gareth, could you note that please, yeah?
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Uh, and perhaps, perhaps minute it, so it's there for, yeah, for, as a record. Um, any, any other questions? I'm assuming, I'm assuming Gareth, and I know it's really naive of me, that, uh, page of six, seven, uh, uh, are where the auditor will tick whether things are satisfactory because it's not filled in at all yet.
Yeah, I've just sent you our PDF version because they sent a Word version, handwritten. Um, I need to speak to them because obviously it's very difficult to, what, what I'm going to try and do is just transpose where they've ticked and then send it back to our internal auditor to see if they can just counter sign one page, so we can, because you know, normally it was a paper version, I've got the, um,
It's, it's really, it's really difficult, it's really difficult and problematic to ask us to approve a document that, that's not actually being filled in, yeah?
Uh, I'm telling you, you've had the report from the internal auditor. Those are the items they've raised, all the other part of the form will be, will be ticked by them according to what is needs to be done and has been signed by them.
The, the, yeah, when, when you have, when you have a tick version, can you send it to us? Perhaps as a screenshot even, if you don't want to send it?
Yeah, because I, I mean, the other thing is I didn't have that at the time, the, the, I've only just had a paper copy from the auditor, but I want to try and make it into a PDF anyway because it's going to be easier going forward.
Yeah, if you, if you have a copy of it, as soon as, as soon as you have that copy or if you can't, if you have difficulty with the PDF, just have a screenshot of it and send that to us. Uh, as soon as you can, that would be really useful, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh, so that's the, the,
So we need to propose, as well, Carol, to try and attract your attention.
Sorry councillor Carroll?
Hi, uh, yeah, can you hear me? Yeah.
Yeah.
Might not be the appropriate minute. I wanted to double check back to the income accounts and check if we'd received full rent from the tenants and if, uh, there was any progress towards payment arrangements.
Uh, that's been agreed by asset management. It was a confidential report to asset management, but we have, um, um, an agreement that we presented to the tenants to pay.
Okay.
We, we aren't writing off any rents, we are recovering it over a period of time.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Uh, any, uh, that we need to, uh, we need to propose, uh, uh, unsettling these going forward? And, uh, I'd just like to say that I, I've got to give an electronic signature to it, but, uh, I'd like the completed document before I do that Gareth, yeah?
Yes, I said you'll get that when I sort that with the other.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody like to propose this? Councillor Haddie, seconded by councillor Greenley, thank you very much. All those in favour?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, reserve, what's the next one?
Reserve.
Reserve?
Yeah. I'm trying to find my next one, I don't think here. Um, I think it's self-explanatory, um, if you recall, um, we did a year-end meeting and, uh, you can see the underspends that we, we incurred having agreed to curtail expenditure as much as we could last year because of the uncertain financial position. So we made an income, oh, sorry, an underspend on expenditure of just short of 54,000, but obviously lost income, um, which gave an total underspend of 38,700. Uh, during the budget planning process, if you recall in November, we said, and has been highlighted by our internal auditor, we need to strengthen our reserves and I think last year proved that in some respects. Um, and therefore we need to look how we would apportion that reserve. I think it's important to point out as well that, um, the statements on social distancing possibly being in place till the end of this, this year, made by the Welsh government, um, could have a serious effect on this year's income as well because obviously we were hoping to have got some income upstairs for the, from the larger events. Uh, but if they've got to maintain social distancing requirements, I think councillor Haddie raised this at asset management, it's not going to be viable for a lot of them to cover the costs of the performances with 64 seats downstairs and 25 upstairs. So we've got to be prudent as well going forward. Equally, uh, asset management members will know that we've got a major leak in the town hall which has to be addressed, so that is primarily going to take, um, at least as much as the last repair did, which our architect has looked at. And it could be the sum of at least 35,000, if not more, we don't know yet. Uh, so what the reserve position is, is identified for this following year that we would, um, split the reserve uh, 24,000 to the general reserve, which gives us a six months push-in. And the remainder will then go to the asset reserve. So you see the final outcome would be 72,480,000, which is equivalent to six months of what our preset payments would be. And then an asset reserve increasing by 14,600 to 34,600. So I'd recommend that that's how we allocate the, um, various underspends from the previous year into reserves, chairman.
Yeah. Okay, any, anybody got any comments? All right, anybody like to, sorry, John, call for it?
No, I propose that we accept that proposal, that suggestion.
Anybody like to second that? Councillor Greenley, any, uh, uh, any, uh, sorry, all those in favour?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, crew of online payments?
Yes, if you recall councillor Haddie correctly pointed out at the annual meeting that, uh, our financial regs requires us to regularly check on both the backstab and other online payments. A simple report, I've outlined, outlined the major, um, direct debits and standing orders, orders we, we have in place at the moment. I say in the moment because obviously some of them will, will change, this is an energy going forward. Um, and we use online payment for, I would say, well, I don't think I've written a cheque for over four years now, or three years. Um, and therefore it's just a simple process of agreeing that we continue to use online payments as part of our banking arrangements, chairman.
Great. Go, we councillor Haddie?
I propose that we, uh, continue the use of online payments.
Yeah. Uh, uh, councillor Lube, second that, all those in favour? Thank you. Right, planning application?
Planning, um, O3, 2021, O308, uh, Penwarne. Demolition of existent extension to real lived dwelling and erection of a single storey rear extension including canopy. So basically, it's replacing the extension with what they've already got there at the moment. It's roughly the same size as the one. But instead of having a flat roof on it, they're going to put a pitched roof straight across the back of the house, uh, which is tiled to match the, the roof above, which is, in my, in my opinion, it looks a lot better than a flat roof. So, uh, it is overlooked by one or two properties at the back corner, but it, it's like looking down the row of them, uh, directly behind it, it's a school, so it doesn't really affect anybody.
Anybody got any comments? Yeah, the suggestion is that we approve it, councillor Greenley, yeah? You're proposing it, are you? Yeah. Proposed by councillor Greenley, seconded by, uh, councillor Carroll, all those in favour?
Aye.
No objection, thank you.
Okay, O3, 2021, O530, Pendle Caravan Park. Uh, basically the current owners are selling it and since they had permission in 1999, they've been putting up to 30 touring caravans on there instead of their 15 in their original planning. So they've been operating outside their original consent, but without complaints or detrimental impact. So they've been advised to apply for an LDC. It's out of, again, you know, it's been there for a long time, fifteen years. Nobody's complained. I don't see any harm in it.
Any comments? The proposal is that we don't object. Anybody like to propose that? Councillor Lubb, seconded by councillor Grinley, all those in favour and no objection?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, O three, twenty twenty one, O five seven one, Land at Sanding Hall Farm. Although this application is for a variation of condition three, it actually states, we wish to vary condition four to allow touring caravans to be sighted on our site for the season. We've had many inquiries requesting the service. So the conditions three and four are number three, the sites shall only be used for caravans on tour and no caravan shall stay on site for any period longer than twenty one days. And condition four, no caravans, motorhomes, tents shall remain on site between the thirty first of October in any one year and the first of April in the following year. So as I read it, it would appear that they want to extend the season. It doesn't say to watch, I'm guessing twelve months, but to keep their visiting to twenty one days as stipulated in condition three. That's the way I read it. I don't know if anybody reads any different into it.
I read it as being that they were asking to allow touring caravans to be sighted for the whole season, not just for twenty one days. And if that were the case, what a comment I would make is that if they're operating as a caravan site with a twenty one day stay, there's a turnover of people visiting, yeah, and a turnover of income for the town. If it becomes a site where somebody puts the caravan on it at the beginning of the season and keeps it there until the end of the season, there isn't a turnover of people and it's more likely to become weekend accommodation rather than, yeah? Holiday accommodation, yeah?
So that's exactly why I pointed out that condition three, it says that twenty one days, but it's condition four they've said they want to change, even though their application is for a variation of condition three. So perhaps we suggest that we propose that it goes ahead, providing that they keep the twenty one days in.
Yeah, yeah, for the reason stated really, that it will merely become a site with holiday homes on it effectively, rather than sort of tourist, temporary tourist accommodation. No, no problem with them extending the season, yeah? But if they decided to extend the season for eleven months to eleven months, yeah? And then kept the notion that caravans could park on it for the season, yeah? There could be vans permanently parked on there.
Yeah, exactly.
Chair, could I come in, Chair, please?
Yeah.
Going back to, okay, not to concentrate on this particular point, but the LDP, which I think is still in force, which has been there for about ten years now, the prime objective for the Dee Valley was always tourism, tourism, tourism from the point of view of jobs. So we have to bear that in mind. What impacts? Basically tourism trumps all, as long as it gives jobs. So just a thought for us. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm guessing from the comments I've just made, maintaining it as a no longer than twenty one day facility increases the potential employment of people in St. Gothlin because there's a turnover of visitors, yeah?
Yeah, it does.
So we need a wording for, yeah?
I would suggest our standard wording, you know, that we have no objection, providing it is, yeah.
No, I think we need to be stronger than that. We have got an objection. The objection is we've no objection to them extending the season, but I am proposing we have an objection on the basis of it becoming a permanent residence for people rather than a, yeah? Home facility, yeah?
I think if we say that we agree with it, providing that condition three is met, i.e. no longer than twenty one days, I think we get sorted, doesn't it?
Yes. Yeah, that the present, the present condition three, rather than revised condition three is met, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it, brilliant. And then the final one, well, there's two together here for some reason, O three, twenty twenty one, O five eight four and O five eight five, that both.
Yeah, one is planning and then the other is listed building consent.
Oh, okay, because they both worded exactly the same. That's fine. I haven't come across one of these before, so I'd confuse them. Basically, those awnings have been up over twelve years now that are there. And looking at the photographs that they supplied, I do remember those Benson and Hedges yellow plastic things over the top, which were hideous. So they're certainly better than those. And nobody's complained about them in twelve years, so why change them now?
Yeah, so the suggestion is no objection. Anybody like to propose that? Councillor Lubb, seconded by councillor Haddie, all those in favour? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Planning applications, sorry. Planning correspondence, oh sorry. If it gets a decision. O three, seven zero grant. Granted to Jason for the hand, it was granted. Abbey Road granted, Penguin Hall approved, yeah? Any planning correspondence? No?
No, Chairman, not this week.
Town clerk's reports.
Yes, Chairman, the first line is a report from Chithlow on the coption and non-voting members. Resulted some vacancies because of resignation. So the committee decided to invite representatives from the St. Gothlin Friends Year, Irish Community Partnership and Clonakopin Food Chair. You can see in section three two, we've got three nominations. And therefore the committee recommended to the town council that these nominees be appointed as non-voting members of the Chithlow Committee, Chairman.
Hey, any comments? Someone like to propose that, please? Councillor Haddie, seconded by councillor Grinley, all those in favour? Thank you.
The next is by Human Resources Committee, sorry, I couldn't read the agenda there. So the consideration is given to the appraisal process. And the chairman during the course of the process felt that the current situation where standing orders seeks the resolution of the committee to ask the chair to undertake the annual appraisal. The suggestion from the committee is to make it more of a balance, to get a different view from one or two people that the chair of the Human Resources Committee and the town mayor be in future asked to undertake the appraisal, which will then be reported obviously back to the Human Resources Committee. So it needs a change of terms of reference, which we change accordingly, and it would also need a change to our standing orders, Chairman.
That's a proposal. Anybody like to propose that? Thank you councillor Miles, seconded by councillor Keddie, all those in favour? Thank you. If there's any dissent, by the way, just give me a shout if I don't pick it up.
Payphone, Chairman. We've always consulted as town community councils if a payphone is removed. And as you can see, the intention of British Telecom is to remove the payphone on Market Street. Its use is very low. Potentially we could buy it again for a pound. We could use it for something, but then of course we have a liability to maintain it. A lot of places have made them into mini tours, information centres, libraries. Deep related is one of the words I can't say. You know, if we want to keep it there, we've got to have a real reason justification. And you could argue that sometimes mobile phone signal would not good, but there is one by the station, I believe, though. And what we're going to do with it going forward will become a consideration. So it's decide how you want to proceed, Chairman.
Anybody got any observations or comments? Councillor Keddie?
Just a quick one. The only time I've seen them being used, in all honesty, is during a studded week or when we've got students from America or whatever, where they think they can budget better by using a payphone rather than their mobile when they're abroad. So do we need it?
No.
Yeah, so we've got three options to agree to remove it, to adopt it, which we don't seem to agree with, and to object to the removal of it. There seems to be a few smiles and nods when it comes to removing it, which is option one.
I propose that we remove it.
Right, remove it. Right, anybody like to propose that? Councillor Mile, anybody like to second that? Councillor Keddie, all those in favour?
Aye.
Thank you. Hydro Power Project.
As Chairman, you recall, we considered a motion to support the Hydro Power Steam Task and Finish Group. They've met a couple of times, Pete Carroll, councillor Grinley and the chair of the group, the mover of the motion, obviously councillor Davis. And they've been very fortunate to be supported by Mr Ted Stiles of Allied Hydro Power, who's worked on similar schemes in the Dee Valley. The hydro project itself is proving to have quite significant outputs. A lot of work's been come in as a pro bono basis from the gentleman I mentioned earlier. However, it would be nice now to formalize all this and take this forward. The group are suggesting that we look at a formal feasibility firm up the proposals. And section three three identifies what we'd be looking at. The estimated cost is about ten thousand pounds and there's currently no budget for its implementation. So we would have to look at external funding to enable this to go forward. And just by, as an aside as it were, the group have looked at other aspects such as wind generation and other renewables and solar arrays. And there is another company, I think we should keep it confidential for now, who are keen to work in tandem. And that would give us aspects in respect to the solar array. So the proposal is presented that I work with the chair of the Task and Finish Group to identify external funding. And if we can find external funding, then to bring that possibly bring an application back for the council to consider moving forward with the feasibility study, Chairman.
Could I come in on this one, Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, big thank you to councillor Carroll and councillor Grinley. We met, we had a good discussion and all the rest of it. I did have a chat, which I think I mentioned before, with the group of funding people. And we would appear to tick all the boxes. At this moment in time, we can go forward without it costing the town council anything at all. And I think we could get paid to have a firmed up version of what was provided in pro bono by Mr Stowe. And that then goes a good idea of what we can do. And I think we should be raising our sights to look at the Green Dee Valley Power Company for the future. I can see us doing something really good here. And I think we're just asking for permission to go forward. A note at the end that the clerk has put in that myself and the town clerk go along to chasing some money. I would like councillor Carroll and councillor Grinley to come along with us as well. We had a good relationship, well, we always have had a good relationship. And I think we all feel just as strongly about this. And I think we can make a good team to take this forward. Thank you.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Haddie?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. I did raise this point when it was first moved in. And that is that we don't own any ground over which water flows and we could generate power. And no matter how laudable these intentions are, are we actually raising, who are we actually raising this on behalf of? Is it ourselves or is it on behalf of somebody else and we're fundraising for it? It seems a little unclear in my mind.
Councillor Davis or?
Yeah, I'll take that one, Chair. Yeah, okay, the big picture for me is if I got the town council to become a power company, as an aside, it's not doing it on behalf of anybody else. The fact that the solar power panel array has come forward, it would be an easy win, easy to do, easy to get up and running, to prove our capabilities and do a joint venture with this company with the big picture eventually Hydro Power. But the solar power one is a quick win for us. So answer your question, councillor Haddie, I envisage the town council using the kick as the vehicle to do it.
Any other questions? Just an observation, I know she's not here tonight, but in a conversation I had with councillor Lovelock a couple of days ago, I believe that in her day job, she's identified some potential sources, yeah? That the group might like to apply to, yeah? So that could be a sort of spark.
Yes, Chair, we are aware of this. She did email me and yes, we will take every opportunity to explore all funding sources. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So the proposal is that we take out of the words with the chair of the, so that it reads the Task and Finish Group therefore recommend the town council, task the town clerk and the Task and Finish Group to seek external funding. Would that be all right, Stuart?
Yeah, you're really good. Thank you.
That's what you just said, so. Yeah. And works with the partner company to progress the array project. Anybody like to propose that? Councillor Carroll, anybody second that? Councillor Keddie, all those in favour?
Aye.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Unanimous, thank you. A scheme of delegation.
As Chairman, if you recall, members rather resident to on this last meeting at the annual meeting. I brought it back as I said I would. Hopefully all the comments, well, comments from councillor Haddie have been incorporated. I had a few comments from councillor Palmer, which I also included where necessary or addressed some of the issues raised because some of the things were in the preamble to committees, they have been taken out, they were general to all committees. As I said before, these documents are very useful and, you know, in researching a bit more, there has been some case law behind the use of these documents, which have allowed decisions made by councils to hold up in, you know, under case law. And the use of the scheme of delegation is used to show who was properly assigned to be delegated by responsibilities. As a second, so it's whether the recommendation is to adopt it as amended, General.
Yeah, we've had it for quite a few weeks now. We've had the opportunity to comment on it and to read it. Anybody got any comments? If not, I'll just propose that we accept it. Now, I can't, somebody, councillor Grinley will propose it, councillor Mile will second it, sorry. And all those in favour?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Getting a little over enthusiastic I was just then, yeah? Okay. Correspondence, Gareth.
Yes, just to bring the attention, we had an email wishing, no councillor mention, just wishing to make a complaint about a contact with a councillor. And as for the revised protocol, as it's obviously a complaint, but to date the councillor, it's not covered under our complaint procedure because that's about process. So it's an auto battelet, just advise them that if they are going to complain, they need to complain to the public service ombudsman. I gave them the necessary links. Haven't heard anything since, so we'll just have to leave that one. The next one is Mr Anne Jones, the gentleman that we nominate as a youth representative has now withdrawn.
a youth representative has now withdrawn, uh which is disappointing. However, at this point, um I'd like to mention that Mr Harvey Barrett couldn't make the last meeting because he had a physics exam, to remember, next day, and reluctantly withdrew his application because he felt it was unfair, but said, should the vacancy occur in the future, he would be willing to take, you know, be considered again. So I've conferred with him again and he has agreed that, yes, he would still wish to be considered. So we could take this agenda item to start this out if you felt that was appropriate. Bearing in mind, we asked the other to do a presentation, but I don't know, sorry, on paper, the um the application, I think, was exceptional. And so I.
Might propose we accept him?
Yeah. Anybody, yeah, seconded?
Seconded.
Yeah, thank you, all those in favour? Thank you.
I'm particularly pleased that he's put his name forward because he does actually reside within Slangothlin.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good. And perhaps, perhaps uh in lieu of a presentation, if he joins us at our next meeting, he can just introduce himself and tell us a little bit about himself, yeah, that'd be good.
I'll advise him that, chairman, thank you.
Uh reports submitted to the town council, yeah? Members representing the council and other bodies. Has anybody got anything to report? Just just out of interest, um colleagues, our 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 groups in Slangothlin starting to emerge from the, no, so we're kind of much the same as we were some months ago. Okay, thank you, it's just, yeah, just a worth worth noting, really.
Uh the the fall running clubs back up and the canoe clubs back up and running.
Oh, that's good, yeah, outdoor activity with lots of fresh air breeze and no masks, yeah?
Yeah.
Uh chairman, just to say, in future, there'll be the first item, there would be youth representative reports to give them an opportunity if they wish to report anything.
Yeah.
So unfortunately Shay makes that, obviously, um yeah, so that's where they'll have the opportunity to input.
Right, uh uh notice of motion to consider a notice, notice of motion standing in the name of councillor Peter Carroll. Uh anybody like to propose that we, yeah?
Chair, can I, yeah, can I just say, please, if I may?
Yeah.
Yeah, um when councillor Carroll and councillor Greenley were at my house with our meeting, they will have noticed that I'm a big supporter of this no mowing, mowing lark and um that the half acre at the back of my house is wild and there's lots of wild stuff there, so I'm a big supporter of this. Whether for the right reasons, I don't know.
Yeah, the process, Stuart, before we, before councillor Carroll uh makes his submission, we need to.
Oh, sorry.
Uh in our standing orders to uh uh effectively vote to allow him to do it. So would anybody like to propose? Thank you councillor Greenley, thank you councillor Haddie, all those in favour of allowing councillor Carroll to present to us? Thank you very much. Off you go councillor Carroll, thank you.
Chairman, can I, I, oh councillor Carroll, apology. Um the way the email came, there was a picture of no mow and then underneath was a bit more of the motion, which I'd like to, but I've advised him he can speak on that as part of the motion, obviously, and then I think he'd have a recommendation based on that as well.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, far away.
Yeah.
So uh in line with our biodiversity policy and the declaration of a climate and ecological emergency, the proposal is that the council shall declare its support for no mow May and shall do the following each and every year until superseded by more wide ranging actions. Um so the proposals, which you might want to debate individually, um Derbyshire have got a lot of this in their policy, but I'd like to speed it up, having seen the common space outside my house shaved uh in May, uh it's immediately asked Derbyshire County Council to ensure that their workers and contractors follow a no mow May policy in Slangothlin. In addition, ask D C C to consider not mowing areas such as the edges of Coit Avon Recreation Ground, the playground on Penguin Estate, other grass open areas in the town. Um I felt probably need consultation with residents and to signpost them to make clear the importance to pollinators, carbon capture and wildlife, so people don't just think it's a mess. And again, this is in line with our policies. An initial compromise will be following no mow May and mowing edge strips nearest footpath so people still feel the grass is cared for rather than mowing everything. Uh in addition, I would ask D C C to move to cut and collect on all mowing in Slangothlin to reduce fertility and increase natural regeneration of local wildflowers. And at the end of April each year, the council publicises no mow May to the residents of Slangothlin, including via a press release to local media and schools. And that's the motion in full.
Anybody gotten questions? Yes, councillor Haddie?
Um throughout your submission, councillor Carroll, you referred to Derbyshire County Council throughout, um which we can make representations to, of course. Um our patch is the old Penrind Cemetery. Are you suggesting we, because at the moment, I think we only mow it twice a year, don't we, uh, that would be within our direct um purview?
Yes, we cut, we we tend to cut just a footpath swathe, so very much the the rest is left to grow, but we don't have to start that until June, we can leave it grow. And it's cut once, um and the, I mean, the the major thing that's done first is that the hedge road. Um so it's not actually the mowed grass, but.
Yeah, I'm, if you're going to do an uh a first mow, March or April wouldn't interfere much, a lot of people recommend you cut early and then cut once everything is seeded uh around September, so.
That contract is finished now, so we can, we've obviously got to go out this year for next year from now on, with the end of this year, so we can incorporate all those elements now into this earlier cut and not to cut, oh, not to cut in mow, not to cut in May. So, yeah, it's quite optimal, really.
Yeah, and basically it's asked mostly, we have that within control, that's covered by our motions anyway, um but it's asking Derbyshire to accelerate what they're doing local to us.
Yeah, and I think as councillor Haddie correctly said, if we if we, if our resolution is that we're adopting this and then we write as a consequence to tell Derbyshire we're adopting it and the things you've listed, we would like them to take due consideration.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, so we have a proposal.
Before we go to the proposal, could I say something, please?
Yeah, carry on.
Yeah, thank you. Um, okay, I looked up no uh mow uh May and it was referred mostly to private um people and that was why I made my comment earlier on. Um I remember when I was in post, the howls of outrage that would happen if the grass grew too long in Penguin, so just a note of caution, um when the open spaces in Penguin, which are, they're very nice, um if we let the, if Derbyshire lets the grass grow too long, the residents will not be backward in coming forward and say, hey, we want a grass cutting, uh just just a point I'm making. I'm quite happy to let my wilderness grow and I'm sure other people are, but when you start talking about open spaces, members of the public do have other ideas, just a thought to us all.
Yeah, and if you read through the bit that wasn't included, it does say we may need to consult on that and also it needs signposting what is actually going on, otherwise you will get that kind of reaction.
Councillor Greenley?
Um opposite the park, you have that very high bank and what the council have done is they've only cut the edge sort of suede. Up above that, the grass has been allowed to grow. The only thing missing is more variety of flowers. Nobody's complaining about that.
Yeah, they should, they should come with time with the reduced mowing.
Good.
Any other comments? We have a proposal on the table. Anybody like to? Thank you, all getting, thank you, Mr Loeb, all those in favour?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for your attendance this evening, ladies and gentlemen.